Okay. If we could call the meeting to order, stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Larry?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McHugh?
Here.
Mia Martin?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Ms. Fattacante, present? Seven present.
Okay, I think where we left off at the last meeting, there were several matters referred to subcommittees affecting the budget. The first one occurs on page two with personnel in the superintendent's office. And I believe there was a report distributed to members with recommendations from the Personnel Subcommittee as to how to treat that. So why don't we hear from the chairperson of the Personnel Subcommittee, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. The Personnel Subcommittee did meet to review the superintendent's recommendations. Basically, what we'd like to do for the purposes of our budget and for the budgeting process is, there, at this point, we're still, as we all know, in the process of negotiating contracts with all of our unions. Historically, what we've done is waited until those negotiations are completed before we begin the individual negotiations with the central office staff and the administrative staff. So what we'd like to recommend is, while we can appreciate that when the budget was first created and crafted, those, there were some increases that were budgeted for, including our, all of our contracts with our assistant superintendents and with the superintendent herself, do include salary adjustments based on performance. But at this point, this, the Subcommittee and the committee as a whole has not taken any action to determine our performance achievements, so we really can't make any kind of anticipatory decision as to whether those, whether those adjustments are going to be made until we really have time to take a real look at the, at the goals and the achievement levels of them. So, basically, what the Subcommittee has recommended and what the superintendent's office has provided us with is a listing that takes the straight salaries as they exist right now and projects them into next year without any anticipation of any kind of performance bonus for any of those positions, the superintendent or any of the superintendent, assistant superintendent positions. The, what we might anticipate in terms of those performance bonuses have been pushed into the school committee suspense account so that we will have the opportunity and that we are, we do have the money allocated so that we can access it, but that it will need to be an action taken by this, by this full committee. In addition to that, there is, and I would ask if the superintendent or perhaps Assistant Superintendent Lang could go through line item, or, I'm sorry, referencing here on page number five, the FY 2007 salary, I would say, adjustment, if we could discuss how that was arrived at. I'll ask Mr. Lang to do that, please.
Thank you. To, to reflect the, the black and white document that you have in front of you, to this particular page of the budget book, the top line item under Superintendent of Schools, the recommendation would be to decrease that amount by $5,020 to a new total for that line item of 1,43,745, to leave the second item alone. To, to the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, increase that line item by 6,954 to 1,12,611. For the Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and Recruitment, to decrease that line item by 24,99 to a new total of 1,03,158. Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services line, to decrease that by 24,99 for a new total of 99,177. Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, to decrease that line item by 24,99 to a new total of 99,177. And then to replace the Deputy Superintendent Salary Differential, it's currently at 9,500, to bring that down to zero. So that would bring a new personnel bottom line total to 577,273, or a new bottom line for that particular page, to 893,573.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Okay, is that, that's the recommendation from the Personnel Subcommittee to make those adjustments?
Yes. The Subcommittee made the recommendation to, to make those adjustments as listed.
Move approval.
Okay. Motion to approve the recommendation and the bottom line figure by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Could you state the...
Can you give us the bottom line figure again?
Sure, sorry about that. It's 893,573.
Roll call.
Roll call, yep.
Mr. Leahy? Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, I think the, the next page that was left unfinished was page 15. Oh, 13, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, page 13 was approved, but there, I think, there is a proposed correction, is that right, Mr. Lang? Madam Superintendent, or, Mr. Lang?
Yes, that's correct. When, when I was going through the, the budget adjustments, we had the staff trade-offs the last time, the essential needs trade-offs, there was one that I had recorded improperly. One of the schools in the trade-off had wanted to eliminate a .5 science teacher. I had recorded it as eliminating a .5 library media specialist. There was no net effect on the dollars, it's just changing an FTE in the dollar amount on two of the pages, but the first one comes at science teachers on page 13. It's to change the FTE, it currently reads 56.5, to change it to 56, and to change the bottom line to, for that particular line item for science teachers, to reduce it by 28,260, so the new bottom line would be 3,396,522 for science teachers.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Larry. Roll call, please.
So what's the new bottom line?
The new bottom line, 3,396,522, right? Well, that's, that's just the subtotal.
Yeah, that was just the subtotal for that line. The new bottom line for the page after that change goes in would be 8,203,602.
Okay, roll, roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, so that brings us to page 15A and B, I believe, which were special education services, and this matter was also referred to Subcommittee, and I believe there is a report from the Subcommittee.
Yes, Your Honor.
And that's Ms. Dougherty, his chair?
Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, the Special Ed Subcommittee did meet, and we looked at three items. The first was the clerical reorganization of the Special Ed Department. At that time, we decided to accept the report as a report of progress and request for an update when further analysis is completed. So that doesn't have any impact on the budget today. We're going to be getting more information at a later date. The second report had to do with the high school reorganization, trading one ETC position for an academic chair of special education. At that time, the administration provided the rationale for the need for a chair for special education, including the need for someone to oversee the program, ensure the quality continues. It was recognized, however, that there is an issue with the workload of now having two ETCs instead of three, that they would have more students on their caseload, and that's something we will be watching closely, but the motion was made by Connie Martin, seconded by myself, that the Subcommittee recommend to the committee as a whole that the superintendent's FY 07 budget recommendation to trade off one ETC position for an academic chair position be accepted. So we did make that motion.
Okay, was that the only change that impacts the budget?
No, we also looked at the essential needs budget. I don't know if you want to take it all at once?
I'm going to take it line by line.
That, well, that was a trade-off one, so I...
Okay. So that would reduce the line for teachers' special education. I believe that's in the summary sheet by 136,492.
It's on the adjustment page, isn't it?
Is that's on your new, your new page for today, under the Special Ed Teachers? It's a reduction from 156 FTE to 153 FTE. The amount of the dollar deduction is 136,492 for a new bottom line for Special Ed Teachers of 9,089,358.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Okay. Motion to approve by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by, seconded by Ms. Martin, Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I wasn't able to attend the Subcommittee meeting, so either the chair or superintendent, we're going to recommend, what's the recommendation again?
We're doing a trade-off where we're going to eliminate one ETC position, which has now become open. We're not going to fill that ETC position. Instead, we're going to put a special education chair at the high school who would evaluate the special ed personnel and really coordinate the services and improve the quality of the services that are provided to the special education students at the high school. That's the plan behind that trade-off.
And was it discussed, I guess, Madam Superintendent? Some of the chairs, I know I keep bringing this up, but some of the chairs, we have half a chair. We couldn't get by with half a chair in this position.
It's really not, given, given the responsibilities, for the person to have assigned class time would be, in, in special education, would be very difficult for that job to be done that way, so that, so that for...
Are they, I didn't think they were teaching classes, though.
For the special ed, pardon me?
Aren't they team chairs, or, aren't they evaluating, are they teaching class or are they evaluating?
I'm sorry, were you asking about the academic chair position? Or the...
Well, we're going to trade off ETC...
Right.
...for a chair. And what do the ETCs do? I thought they're doing evaluations for special ed?
The ETCs are coordinating, are, are, are working directly with teachers' families and organizing all of the team meetings that have to take place when the youngster's referred for evaluation or there's a reevaluation. They handle, they handle that, they do that. They also, at times, go out of district when there's a placement of a youngster out of district, so they require a flexible schedule.
Okay, so what's the chair going to do, then?
The chair handles all of the supervision evaluation of the many special education teachers and programs at the school. So they do supervision evaluation, they coordinate the programs, not the meetings, to determine what services the youngsters get, but they, they are responsible, the chair, be responsible for monitoring, developing, improving the programs that are offered at the high school, the many different special education programs. They're also responsible for supervision and evaluation of all of the special education teachers. The ETCs have no responsibility in either of those, those areas. We're at a situation where in, in 2003, we, we eliminated the academic chair position, and we had two ETCs. We subsequently added an ETC so that they could do some of the coordinating of program that was needed. We were fortunate to have Norma Audi, who'd been the former academic chair for special education, serving in the, in the newer position of Coordinator of Student Services. It was part of the whole consolidation when we eliminated six or seven positions at the high school that year in the budget cuts. Ms. Audi is retiring at the end of this year, so we, we will not be fortunate to have someone in that coordinator position who knows the whole special ed program and all of the staff. So it's really critical for us to have the quality program and staff supervision that we need to have our programs be in full compliance with the special ed regulations. That's what we discussed at the Special Ed Subcommittee. So this is restoring the academic chair position and leaving the high school with the same number of ETCs that it, that it had before 2004.
Okay, so she'll be in charge of the 29 special educators at the high school?
That's right.
Okay, and they feel, and what happens if the two ETCs get behind? How, do we have anything to back?
Well, we looked at the, we, we provided some information to the Subcommittee that showed the caseloads for all of the ETCs throughout the system, and identified that the high school ETCs actually have a lower caseload than other ETCs, in part because they've been doing some of the coordinating work of the chair, but now the chair will be able to do that. So our, our belief is that we'll, with two ETCs, we'll be able to be in compliance and they'll be able to do the work that's required of the educational team chairs, and it will get the benefit of a person who is fully, has all the authority and responsibility for staff supervision evaluation and program development and evaluation. So we think this is key to ensuring that we get in compliance with the regulations and have a quality program for youngsters at the high school.
Okay. One other question, just quickly, the, the numbers then on our report, page 31, I don't know if you have that, are these the numbers here then, that they're going to split out? Page 31 of the Subcommittee Report?
This, the memo from Ms. Audi to me?
Yes.
Yes.
So the num, in the second paragraph, three quarters of the way down, the third bullet, those are the numbers at the high school level, that the ETCs?
These are the total number of special education students that they're responsible for. It does not, it does not actually describe the caseload very well because it does not describe the number of meetings that are held, and that's, that's the critical factor for ETCs.
Okay.
Through, through, Your Honor, through, to, to my colleague, one of the things that we learned was that while the numbers look extremely high, though, that is, quote, your caseload, but we did learn that during a given year, you did not see every single one of those kids in that year. You might review their file, but once an evaluation has been given and a student is given an IEP, unless the IEP is not working, that, that there's no reevaluation or an opening of that case file. But you maintain that folder as part of your case. You don't necessarily have to go back and have any action on that student. So while the numbers look really high, and I, when, when we first saw it, we were concerned too, and like, how, how can you now take the numbers that three people are doing and divide them by two? It was explained that you could go two years and not activate a case file unless a child had, had a problem or an issue, and you'd need to recall that case file and relook at that and, and make a determination. So while you're maintaining that case, you're not actually doing any work to it, because it's already been done. So it's sort of sitting idle. So the numbers are not really reflective of the, of the number of kids that they're actually seeing.
All right, and could I ask one other question then? Who's, I'm sort of familiar with this process, but who's, who, if the ETCs aren't checking up yearly, who's doing the checking yearly then? It's up to the, the individual teacher then, to keep the, to keep these kids on course?
Madam Superintendent?
The, the ETC has responsibility for reviewing all, all the cases, but they, they don't have, the meetings are the very time-consuming part of the process, so further in the information in the minutes, in the attachments, is the, is a one-page document called ETC caseloads, and it showed the caseload of the number of special education students and the number of meetings that ETCs across the system serve, so that you can see the average for kindergarten through, for elementary and middle school ETCs was, was a caseload, number of students of 100, 179, with, I'm sorry, 133, take the '04-'05 year, because it's a complete year, was a, was 133, the average was 133 meetings. The average at the high school for the ETCs was fewer than 50. And it's not that they weren't doing anything, they were trying to pick up a lot of the, some of the responsibilities of coordinating the program in the absence of an academic chair. So that's why we're quite confident that two ETCs can manage the caseload.
Okay, and one other question. What's, what's the savings, then?
There is no savings, it's a trade-off.
What's the, well, so the cost of another ETC is how much, again?
I think we, we, when we took all the, the adds and the deletes of the trade-off, it, it came out to a net no increase. A specific position may be, an academic chair is paid somewhat higher, more than an ETC is paid, but that was balanced by some other trade-offs throughout the system where the, where the replacement was costing, the salary for the replacement would be different than the position being held. And Mr. Lang has something to add to that. On the bottom of page one, on the trade-offs, it lists all of the trade-offs for the high school, and the net was no increase.
All right. I'm, I'm just wondering, I mean, are we, was, by not having that third ETC, we're saving $50,000? I mean, I guess we're not, we're going to be foolish in this...
Well, we need the ETCs, we need the, we need additional ETCs more at the elementary and middle school level, and that's where you see the recommendation in the essential needs. That's where we really need the additional ETCs.
All right, okay, thank you.
Mr. McHugh?
Thank you. I did attend the Special Education Subcommittee the other night, and we had a very long discussion, as we are tonight, on this topic, and I, I will not support this tonight. I am not convinced that at the high school, that this is, I think it's, we should stay the way we are for this year. I think, I do believe we need the academic chair. I don't think this is the year to put it in. I, I feel that we're going to be taking away services of students, and now we'll have to, two people to pick up the slack, and I think that it's going to be very difficult, and I, I won't be surprised if we sit here a year from now looking to reinstate if this passes another ETC chair at the high school. And that's just, I don't know, it's something inside me, based on my experience and everything else, that I, I really feel that this will be, hurt the student services that we're providing, so with that thought process, I'm not going to vote for this tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Larry?
Through you to the Superintendent, just a quick question. Who is the chair going to report to directly?
The chair will report directly to, I believe that this position reports, I'd have to check, I think this report, this, I'd have to check with you.
Okay, because, and I, just, as I discussed in the Subcommittee, as, as my colleague just suggested, we had a very long discussion regarding multiple issues on that, in the secondary education. I, I too attended that meeting. I said I was going to support this position because of the recommendation of, of you and the headmaster, and I said, as I said in that Subcommittee meeting, I'm going to hold, you and the headmaster accountable because we are making a trade-off. So essentially, the way you presented it, the services won't diminish, okay? In fact, the services should be enhanced because of the changes we're making.
Yes, I'm, I'm confident of that.
Okay. The other concern I had, which is something, we, we have a position being, I guess, not filled because someone's retiring, that's Norma Audi's position.
Yes.
That's the person who was handling that and, and another function as well?
In fiscal year '04, we eliminated the position of Academic Chair for Special Education and Director of Guidance, and combined it into a position called Coordinator of Student Service, which has then taken on a lot of responsibilities at the high school to coordinate the, all of the student services at the high school, which is frankly something that was fragmented before. So that position has turned, turned into the, sort of, the, the third, the third key position at the high school. So there's the headmaster, there's the curriculum instruction person, and the student services. We also, at the time, eliminated the master position, which was the number two position at the high school, right below the housemaster. So the Coordinator of Student Services picked up a lot of that responsibility.
So would it be, so right now, we're currently looking for a person to be the head of the student services in the high school?
Yes.
Would it be a move where we could achieve additional cost savings by just having a person who is the head of the guidance department?
And we've seen so much gain that's come from the coordinating of all of the different student services. It's been a tremendous, in spite of cuts, it's been a tremendous gain in terms of coordinating guidance services with health services, which, with youngsters who need 504 accommodations, with our coordination with, with, with agencies and institutions outside of the, of the high school. It's, it's been, it's been a tremendous position that has enabled the high school. I, I know if the headmaster were here, he would, he would explain, he would explain in considerable detail the improvements that have happened through that coordination.
Okay, and that position hasn't been filled at this point, though, correct?
Not yet, that's right.
Okay. What I'm going to do, I'm going to support this as, as outlined as I said in the Subcommittee, but it's, our next Little House Committee Subcommittee, which is, I guess, the seventh, I forgot the date, that's something I'm definitely want, if I could, to the chairman of the Little High School Subcommittee, add that to the discussion, because if there is a savings in that area, it's something we need to look at and maximize, but I will support this at this time.
Okay, so there is a motion that has been made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the Subcommittee, which reduces on page 15A, the line item for special ed teachers. Mr. Lang, do you have the, the final numbers that, to the bottom line of that page, and then I think it affects the subsequent page as well?
Yes, on, on that particular page for teachers' special ed, the FTE will change from 156 to 153. The reduction is 136,492 for that particular line total of 9,089,358. The total on the bottom of page, just the top part of that page, 15A, would now stand 17,167,206.
And then that also impacts the, the bottom at 15B, right?
It does. 15B, if we were to take it together, would now have a total bottom line of 20,293,216.
So that's the motion that's been made and seconded to make those reductions in the proposed budget by 136,492. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leahy?
No.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
No.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays, approved.
Okay, is there further action on that Subcommittee Report?
Yes, Your Honor, we did. We had a discussion about the, the special ed additions under the essential needs portion of the budget. Subcommittee members reviewed the document that identified the rationale for each of the essential needs related to the special education budget that was presented by the superintendent for FY 07. Some of the things that were explained to us, for example, were that we've got two nurses on that special education essential needs budget, and that is for students that we currently have in the system, that without having those two nurses put into the budget, those students would require out-of-district services, which would end up costing us more money. So that was one of the rationale for the nursing services. Some of the other positions we looked at were the addition of psychologists and ETC members to create teams that would be focused on specific schools throughout the district in order to, again, provide a better quality of services to the students. A more intensive relationship would then be able to develop between students, faculty... A more intensive relationship would then be able to develop between students, faculty, and parents, when you have these teams that work together in, at these certain schools. Subcommittee members asked whether any of the proposed positions could be delayed, given that this was a total of over half a million dollars in increased costs at a very lean budget time, as we know. And at that time, the superintendent explained that the final three teaching positions on the list, which if you look on the sheet there, those would be at the Malloy, the Pawtucketville, and the Riley and the Wang. And some of those were halftime positions, that we might be able to delay those for one year without running too great of a risk of non-compliance. Many of these additions are based on a review that the special ed department recently had. We have not gotten that review in writing yet, it's just been an oral report to our administrators about where we are in non-compliance. So this is an effort to get us in compliance as soon as possible. At that point, the superintendent also noted that they would like to, if they did cut those positions, the last positions of the schools that I named, that they would like to recommend a one-time purchase, which would cost $150,000, to buy, read 180 software and books that would help to do a comprehensive reading program, to serve up to 280 struggling freshmen that are expected to be at the academy in September. So they're looking at, again, a trade-off with those positions. So I don't, I'm not sure how the committee would like to handle that, but, so we have the initial justification for these essential needs additions in special education, and then we have an adjustment that would, you know, be impacted by adding this reading program at the high school.
Okay. So that was the recommendation of the Subcommittee?
Yes. We had a motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by myself, that the Subcommittee voted to accept the report as a report of progress, and leave it open to discussion with the rest of the committee, how they wanted to handle that.
Okay. So I think the additions come on page 17. I'm not sure where the reductions come from, but Madam Superintendent?
I think inadvertently on 15A, Mr. Lang gave you, gave you the numbers and the FTEs for the reduction of those teachers when he gave you, when you've just voted, your last vote. So inadvertently, you voted a dollar figure, so the, so that not only did you vote, in terms of the numbers, the trade-off of the ETC and the academic chair, but also the elimination of the three positions at the schools that Ms. Dougherty was talking about. So unless the committee would like to change that vote, I think you've already taken that vote.
Okay. So we've, we voted those reductions, those were included in the figures in the previous vote. So the next required vote would be, first, is everybody clear on that? I guess some people weren't, okay. So the next required vote, I think, comes up on page 17, which would increase one of the line items here by $300,000.
Right. So that the line item for system-wide supplies and textbooks, Mayor, would be, would be increased by $150,000, so that that total line item would be 450,000. And that would enable us to do the purchase of the whole freshman reading program for next year.
Okay. Motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Roll call, please.
So what's the new bottom line figure? Is there an increase?
The new bottom line would be 1,402,420.
Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay. Anything further from the special ed Subcommittee?
No, Your Honor, but I think we have to vote those additional positions, right? Oh, we've done that? Okay, sorry. We're all set then, thank you.
Okay. So those, that concludes the two matters, I believe, that were referred for recommendation and report from the Subcommittee. So those items now, I think, have been addressed. There are a few additional items, I think, that we didn't get to, as well as some technical corrections. And I think the first of those comes up on page, well, there are changes on 19A, 19B, and page 20. Madam Superintendent, why don't you take us through, through those?
19, what's on 19A and B in the budget are all of, include all of the items on the essential needs budget and the trade-offs. So, and then if you, if you, if you look at the information from, there are some critical needs that the committee may wanna consider. You have not yet considered some of the critical needs on page 18 of your summary.
Can the Superintendent point those out, please, through, Your Honor?
Yes. On page 18 of your, of the series of recommended adjustments from your original book, one was to restore, the first one, line 76 on page 18, was to restore an improved administrative apprentice house leadership position and program at the high school for $144,000. This was, committee members had asked earlier for a design of an apprentice program that would restore the apprentice program and create opportunity for Lowell teachers to have opportunity to both learn firsthand the work, administrative work, and provide an important service. This is, this is, this is the high school portion of that program. It would involve identifying, selecting four high school teachers to serve as, as released from teaching responsibilities, to work, each one to work directly with one of the four housemasters in the main building of the high school. During that time, they would be enrolled in coursework, they would be carefully mentored, and they would spend, spend a year doing supervised administrative work, learning the work of supervision, of administration, and at the same time, perform a very valuable service at the high school.
Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm gonna put my money where my mouth is, because I'm a person who complains continuously about the fact that we are not mentoring our own staff, so that they are able to take administrative positions. And this is an opportunity now for us to, in fact, have a program, or restore a program that enables us to take our own staff members, take our own teachers, and prepare them for administrative positions. And so I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor to add this, to add this program. I think it's incumbent upon us, as a school system, to encourage the growth from within. And if we complain about the fact that it isn't there, and now we have an opportunity presented to us to make it happen, then I think we need to take the opportunity to, in fact, make that happen. So I'm gonna vote in favor of the Superintendent's recommendation.
Well, is, I don't know, is this a recommendation? I mean, the recommended budget does not include this in it.
Right.
Is that correct?
It's a recommendation to add this program in.
Yes, it was, it was on my list of critical needs that I asked the committee to consider.
Okay. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd just like to make a comment. I also would support this, and it's a total of another $158,000, which I realize, in a tight budget, is a lot of money. But we know that we don't have the staff at the high school to really do the job, especially the housemasters. We're asking them to be accountable for student attendance, student tardiness, and there just isn't enough time in the day. This would enable them to have another assistant, and somebody who could focus on these very critical areas at the high school, and also, as my colleague mentioned, be able to move into getting the experience that they would need to become future administrators. So I would also support this. Thank you.
Anyone further? Mr. Leary?
I'd like to support it, but I have other areas in the critical needs that I think are more, are probably of higher importance, in my opinion. I feel our teachers at the high school already are qualified, and can easily fill housemaster positions. It's a question of actually getting them to take, get those positions. So I'm not gonna support the hundred, what's it, $150,000, I have $144,000 in my numbers for the, okay, I'm sorry. I'm not gonna support that. I think, obviously, our folks are already qualified to handle these positions. So I don't think this additional money, at this point, with a budget that we have, I can't support it.
Mr. Leahy? Could you just, I'm sorry, could you, how does it work, again, that they take off some time from their teaching position? Half a year, quarter of the year?
Our, our current plan is that they'd, they'd be full-time for a full year.
All right. I'm just, am I on the right page? It says restore improved administrative apprentice house.
Yes.
Okay, four times 36,000. So what's that number for, then?
It's replacing the teaching time.
All right. That's replacing four teachers, but the teachers get the same pay to do the adminis- okay.
They'd be, they'd get no increase in pay to do this. They'd be, they'd be teachers released from their teaching assignment to, to be apprentice, learning, learning administrative work. And...
Is that, is that the norm, I guess, maybe, in, in the, in education, that normally what they do for that position, or for that program?
Well, for example, we've, we've actually done that a little bit already here. For example, the current assistant principal at the McCall of School, Jason DeCarlo, spent a year full-time, released from his teaching duties, full-time onsite at the Cardinal-O'Connell School, in the Cardinals' last year before it was closed, working under, under the supervision of a, of a principal who was working out of central office, partly working out of central office, and really learning the ropes of building leadership. The next year, he became an assistant principal. And several years ago, I believe we had, I believe, six members of our staff have participated in full-year apprentices, apprenticeships like this, who are now serving as administrators in the Lowell Public Schools.
Okay. Thank you.
But we had to stop the program at the budget cuts. We, we launched the program, we were able to do it for one year at full, sort of full speed, and then we were able to hold on to one position for each of a couple of years. But the last two years, we've not been able to have a position.
I guess my question is, they know, you normally do the whole year, though, huh? I mean, if it's just an apprentice program and you're getting a taste of it, why wouldn't you just do a, I mean, because they're not gonna, I don't see any openings coming up, right?
Well, there are two things, there are two reasons to do full year. One is that this is also a tremendous benefit, I'm talking about the high school one, that is a tremendous benefit to the high school, to have someone working from day one, from the first day of school to the last day of school, working in the house office. It's not particularly useful to have somebody working just a quarter, or even half the year, because you wanna be able to have the benefit of that person's work from the first day to the last. So this is, this is not just a benefit for the individual who learns about administration. This is a tremendous benefit for the high school, for each house to have a second person in the house who's available all day long to work on very specific assignments. For example, one of the things we know they would do is work closely with the substitute teachers. They could learn to, they could get some experience with supervision evaluation by observing in classrooms of substitute teachers, and working with substitute teachers on any issues they may be having with classroom management, or understanding the curriculum, or whatever, which is something, we just don't have the, we don't have the people power at the high school. We don't have enough people in administrative positions to do a very good job at that, other than a kind of, you know, Band-Aid crisis kind of approach to it. So that's an example of a way that we would be providing an important service for staff and students at the high school, and at the same time, be giving four of our teachers the opportunity to really learn firsthand what that work is really like, and to develop their skills. The, the middle school and elementary school program is, is different. We'll use existing positions, directing some, being building administrators for summer schools, or the building administrators for the extended time program, because some of our schools have that, where we'd identify apprentices who would take those positions, and then be mentored through those. That's why it's much less costly, because we're taking existing positions, we're not budgeting for those positions. Those are grant-funded positions that we can count on having, but we'll reserve them for people in the apprentice program. And they would actually make a two-year commitment to those. A two-year commitment of coursework, and a two-year commitment to the, to the summer school and/or extended time program leadership. So that's, again, they're, that's the explanation for why the elementary and middle school program would be less, less costly in the budget.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to speak on this. Is there any objection for me to speaking from here? I'm not gonna support this. I, I think, let's just explain my rationale for this. We are assuming, I think, revenues in this budget of the highest proposed increase in Chapter 70 state aid, which is of the three pending proposals by the Governor of the House and the Senate, we are assuming we're gonna get the highest of those. I don't anticipate there being much will on behalf, on the part of the City Council to appropriate money for the school department above and beyond that increase, whatever it ends up being. I think we're being somewhat optimistic that we're gonna get the highest amount of increase in state aid, as is currently proposed, that may not be even realistic in this. So I think to add some of these items, although worthy as they are, is just not gonna be affordable this year. So I, I'm not gonna support this proposal for that reason. Anything further on this? Ms. Martin?
Just to clarify, as we're looking at these line items on page 18, 77 and 78, the middle school and elementary school additions, those aren't accounted for in our actual summer school budget line item.
Correct.
So this is over and above what we, what we'd be allocating to actually spend on summer school. The lines 85 and 86, if I'm reading this correctly?
They're, they are, they are not contingent on having this additional, these, this additional funding for summer school that's listed here. Is that what you're asking?
I think so. So the $14,000 that we're talking about, of those two lines, is not, is something that we would spend in addition to the $500,000 that we'd be spending for summer school. It's not just considered a summer school cost, this $14,000?
The $14,000 covers, covers the cost of course reimbursement.
Okay.
The coursework that the apprentices would be participating in, the supervision of them in their work, the whole mentoring of them in their work, that's the total cost of it.
But the actual salary would be?
The stipend they would receive is, for example, there are, there are middle school programs that we have in place that are, that are going. A year from now, those would go to apprentices. The apprentices would spend next year doing coursework and preparing for that, then they would do the summer school building administration work. Or they would do the extended time program. We have enough, we have enough positions already that are grant-funded for summer school, and, and for, a combination of summer school and extended time programming, that we would have at least, a minimum of six positions, so that we could assign six apprentices to those positions. So it does not presume that you have to expand summer school in order to have this apprentice program. Am I answering the question?
Nope, you are, absolutely. Can I ask, as we do this vote, could we separate these two, so that we could consider the Lowell High School four administrative positions at 144, and then consider the middle and elementary schools as a separate line item?
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on this? So this is a, a motion, I believe, to-
Motion to separate.
Separate, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any approve, any opposed, so that we will consider these items separately, which come up, I believe, on page 19A. So that is, the motion, I guess, by Ms. Fattacante is to increase-
To increase the-
Which line item is it that you wanna increase?
Well, we would be increasing, increasing, yeah. We'd be increasing the budget by the four times 36, which is $144,000, Your Honor, to reestablish the administrative apprentice positions at the high school. positions at the high school.
My suggestion would be that it would be, if I could--
Line item below high school budget.
We'd create a line called apprentice program.
All right, it's not an existing--
Right, it doesn't exist now.
Yeah, include that, create a line. Yeah, I can talk a lot.
Create a line.
Okay. Roll call.
There is a line for the high school, not one for the other.
Ms. Dougherty, okay.
Right.
Sorry.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
No.
Ms. Martin.
No.
Mr. McHugh.
No.
Mia Martin.
No.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Three a's, four n's, defeated.
Okay, and the next item would be, this would be to increase, add a new line, the $7,000 for the middle schools. Is that a motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call on that.
And what's, how much do you want to increase it by, how much?
This is $7,000.
Which line again?
Seven thousand.
This would be a new--
Your Honor. This would be adding a new line.
Adding a new line, from the middle school, right?
Right.
I just got to get this right. Okay. Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
No.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mia Martin.
No.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Five y's, two n's, approved.
Okay, and then there's a, Ms. Dougherty?
I would just make a motion to accept line item 78, restore an improved administrative assistant program at the elementary schools for $7,000.
Okay, motion to add a new line item, $7,000--
Second.
--for elementary schools by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Roll call.
Dougherty, Fattacante. What numbers, $7,000 for the elementary?
Yeah.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
No.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mia Martin.
No.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Five y's, two n's, passes.
Okay, any additional request for modifications to Page 19A? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, Your Honor, through you to the Superintendent, or Mr. Lang, did we vote on the after-school detention program to maintain funding for that?
No, no, you have not yet. So, the other critical needs that I had identified was the, at Lowell High School, the $12,960 for the after-school detention program that was formerly funded by grants.
That's number 80.
Number 80.
On my book. I would make a motion to accept that recommendation. We have a critical need in holding students accountable, and detention is one way we do that. We've lost the grant funding for an after-school detention program. We have to have something in place if we're going to be able to really move forward. That's my--
Through you, Your Honor, to the Superintendent, how successful is that program? Because here's what I hear, no one goes. And I'm not going to spend $12,000 bucks on something that no one goes to. I hear it's a big joke, no one attends, and I can't see my way to spending, I understand that there is a need for it, there's certainly a need for it if we can get students' butts in the chairs after school to be there. But until I feel comfortable about making sure kids actually go, for instance, I understand that if you're tardy and you get this slip to go to after-school detention, you don't go. And there's no enforcement to make you go. So, kids, kids, once you go and you realize that no one knows that you're there or not, you never go again, and you continue to be tardy. So, again, that's why I would have liked the apprentice program, because maybe we could have put some people into these positions to make these programs happen. Because I'm not going to spend any money on something that I, that is being told to me is a big joke.
Madam Superintendent?
Certainly, the headmaster is aware of the challenges with the detention program.
Challenges.
However, however, this year, the detention usage in the freshman academy has been much, much stronger, so that I would urge you not to eliminate, and I would urge you to consider at least half this funding, so that the freshman academy detention could continue, because that's been, again, it's been, the freshman academy is new, there's been a lot of, there have been a lot of efforts on the part of the administrators there, so there's a very different experience of detention among the freshmen at the freshman academy.
Fine, then cut the money in half, and let's use it specifically for the freshman academy. But until I can be assured that high school students are actually going to detention after school, I'm not going to put any money in there.
Mr. McHugh, the freshman.
Thank you. I guess I would, this is something that I brought up through that Tardy report, and it's something that's being addressed. So, I will support it, because this is what came out of it, exactly what you said, and it was something that I was hearing all along, that children were not going. My understanding, years ago, at the last period, they actually had somebody go around and pull the kids out right at the end of the class, saying, "You're going to detention, come with me now." So, they put them in the classroom and put them there. So, I think as part of the high school report, they will be working on a plan on addressing this issue, and I'd hate not to fund it. Then they come back next fall and say, "Well, we can't do anything about it now, because there's no funding or there's no position to oversee it." So, I would hate to take a report that we're starting to make progress on, and identifying a problem, and then working towards the solution, and then end up turning around, hearing a report in the fall, saying, "Well, we can't do it, because we don't have a position either." So, I will support it, but I, it's an issue that's been raised, and it's something I want to see a final report by the first of September, how they're going to address this. And at that time, we always have the right to eliminate a position, or do whatever we want, and move the money to suspense accounts, move it to buy textbooks, or whatever we need at that point. And if it's not working at any given point, we can cut a position and do that. So, I would encourage my colleagues at least to think about that, because I don't want to take another two steps backwards on this type of topic. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I have to agree with my colleague next to me, that that's all you hear, is that this is a big joke, and to fund it, I mean, it's ridiculous. And the other thing I think of, too, is what drives me crazy, is every little thing that someone does in a school, they have to get paid for it. I mean, years ago, it seemed like we all had duties, and we worked seven or eight hours a day. In today's society, it's like if you work a minute over, you're getting paid. I mean, I don't know, it seems like we almost need to go back to basics and say, "Look, this is how a school should be run, this is how many hours you have to work during the day," and then you just do it. To vote for every little minute of the day, it just seems crazy, because one minute we have a grant for it, and the next minute we don't. And then, you know, we do have detention, we don't have detention. I mean, detention should just be part of the school day, and whoever takes a turn to do it, or who's ever in charge of it, may get a stipend, but it should be built into the, into our regular funds. But it just seems ridiculous. And then, to hear that kids don't even show up, and the whole school year went by, and we haven't done anything about it, where's the confidence to vote for it, to have it in for next year? So, I don't know if I can support this either.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. In this, actually, Mr. Leahy anticipated, really, I think in part, some of my question. As we look at this line item, this is exclusively for the stipends. There's no other programmatic thing that we're supporting with this. It's exclusively to basically pay someone to sit in a room alone, as I'm hearing from my colleagues here. I think you're being flip, and I apologize for that, but perhaps not glib, but flip. But, so there's nothing else being invested in this, that, other than just the time for someone to sit there. There's nothing else we're doing with the children when we have them in this room.
This doesn't preclude that from happening, but this is--
Well, precluding it and saying that it's actually happening are two different things.
No, but I think you, I think that the high school subcommittee received a report that did show strong evidence that the freshman academy detention was being effectively utilized. As opposed to, the numbers were very different for 10 through 12. But in ninth grade, the first year of the freshman academy, you saw a report that showed evidence that they were, that the high school was really getting a handle on effective use of detention for the freshmen. So, I would just ask the committee to be, if you could distinguish between those two in your, in your--
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you. I'd like to just add a comment to that. Clearly, there's been an issue with detention, and I think the Tardy report brought out something that, for me, was, really gave us a focus in terms of the lack of consistency from the 10 to 12, from the houses, from the kids from 10 to 12. And although I don't consider the program in place perfect, or anywhere near perfect, it seems to me, if we don't fund adults to be there after school, we have no program at all. I would prefer to keep this program, you know, keep the funding in there, to have adult supervision, and really continue to hold the high school accountable for providing that level of consistency. If I could remind my colleagues of that Tardy report, we saw, and I don't remember which house it was, but there was one house in particular that consistently had much better attendance, in terms of timely attendance of students. And to really continue to look at that data and hold the high school accountable to provide a program that is successful, but to take away, you know, the funding, you have no hope of getting kids on board, or holding them accountable. So, I agree with my colleagues, the system needs work, but I think that, you know, not providing the $12,000 is really going to leave the high school administration with very little recourse to impact students with consequences. Thank you.
Mr. Larry?
Just quickly, I'm going to support this motion. However, what Committeeman Fattacante just stated is clear, it's not being followed in an appropriate fashion. So, I'm going to support it, but we need to hold these folks accountable. Comes back to accountability. If we're going to give someone detention, they've got to show up. So, hopefully, this new database that we just invested a significant sum of money into will help us track the students, find out who's not attending, and force them to attend. When we looked at that report, it was almost, it was, why would you, why would you attend detention? You're almost, why are you even showing up, I guess, is the better question. So, I'm going to support it, but definitely has to be accountable for next year.
Madam Superintendent, if I, what's the source of the grant funding that went away, if you know?
We used the Title I funding for this.
So, federal?
Federal funding.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so what's--
Through you, Your Honor, to my colleagues, I don't think I have a problem supporting the ninth grade suspension. Because if the Superintendent is telling me, "That's the most important," then I have no problem splitting this money in half and voting half of it for the ninth grade. But I'm not going to reward the high school for a job that they're not even doing well yet, that they're not, well, that they're not even doing yet, not even well, but not even doing. So, I'm wondering if we could split this in half?
Okay, motion to really add, add an amount equal to half of $12,960.
And have that half be a portion to the ninth grade.
Okay, so it's $6,480. Motion to increase this item, is this be adding a new item again, by $6,480 by Ms. Fattacante? Any second? Any second? I don't think I can second from the chair. All right, second by Mr. Larry. Yes.
Sorry, who is responsible for making sure students attend at detention? It's the housemaster, correct? It's not the stipend. The stipend is for the teacher sitting in the room, ensuring folks aren't running out the door, I guess, essentially. So, it's the housemaster's job to make sure folks, students are attending detention.
In the case of the freshman academy, one or more of the administrators actually meets with the students, takes students out of detention, meets with them, does sort of problem-solving about why they got themselves into the problem that got them to detention, and really uses it as active intervention during that hour. And then they'll send a youngster back in and take another youngster out, so that they do use it. They've found a way to use it to make it a much stronger part of the, of the school program to hold youngsters accountable for appropriate behavior and regular attendance.
But the stipend's being paid for a teacher--
Right.
--to watch the students in the classroom. So, the person responsible for the student, besides the student themselves, is the housemaster, correct?
That's right.
All right, so the $12,000, whether or not, the ones we need to wa, not to be critical, well, to be critical, the ones we have to challenge are the housemasters, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The funds are, the funds are needed to have, to have a person who is watching over the youngsters.
And as we, through you, Your Honor, to my colleague, what we saw in the Lowell High Report, as Ms. Dougherty indicated, some housemasters are very good at making sure kids get to detention. And I'm not sure what that recipe is, Mr. Larry. All I know is that some kids are ver, some housemasters exceptional at it, others very poor. So, I find it difficult to spend money when, to have a person sit in a room when there's no one there, when there are no students actually present to be monitoring, because housemasters are not doing what they need to be doing, or some housemasters, I should say.
Mr. McHugh?
I think, to be fair, you can't make the statement, "No children are there." I think there are children in detention, it's just not the right number that are being assigned. What we're finding is, there was a low turnout in the report that we got through the Tardy report, that X, Y, there was a number of students who were assigned, you know, like a third that were attending. So, let's say, you know, I don't want to put perception out there that it's an empty room with one person at the head of class saying, "Hey, I'm getting paid to do here, and there's nothing here." There are children there, there really are. So, I mean, let's be clear on what we're saying, because we're misleading folks if we're telling them there's no one in the classroom. It's just not the full amount of students are there, so I want to make sure we get the facts straight. Thank you.
So, why don't we have the housemasters monitoring their own detention? I don't mean to be critical, as my colleague has indicated, but--
Is that directed to me?
No, 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 no. No, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
I'll respond to it. I think, I think through the report, I'm holding the principal responsible, the house, the headmaster responsible for his staff, and I think that's where I'm trying to get that Tardy report to be going, to say, "It's his staff, he needs to get these people focused." And I think you made a good observation, when you looked at that report, some of the housemasters had very good percentage rates. There were some that didn't. Those are the ones that he has to go down and address and become a uniform. With the other thing we found, there was no uniform procedure even, on how this house did it versus this house versus the other houses. They're all doing it differently, and I think at this level, we should all be treating it the same, so there is no differentiation between how this child gets treated versus that child gets treated. I think, you know, you're just selected by a house randomly, so it's not that there's any difference in that. So, I think they need to be doing it all the same way, and that's what they're working on now, and I expect them to show improvement. And this is something that's going to be on our regular meeting, on the radar screen, and we're going to, I know it's something that's, I brought forward, I want to focus on that next year, that we're going to get this turned around and get the children there. I believe that's the goal. And then to say, you know, that we're talking about a $12,000 line item, to have someone do their job and sit there and monitor, and make sure, once they come in, they stay there, that's what this person's job is to do. I don't think that, I want to see nobody there, and then I hear from the headmaster that, "Well, you know, the person that normally would do that, we don't have any money for that, so I'm not sure what we're going to do, and we're going to have to assign other people," which might be. Maybe those other people should be there, too. You know, like you're talking about doing intervention, one person can't deal with 30 or 40 kids. You know, what are you going to spend, 10 seconds for each one? I mean, maybe the housemasters need to get their butts up there, too, and be part of this. And that's something the, I call the headmaster's job, to come back with a plan on how he's going to make this work. But I'm looking at, this is funding for someone to be there and do their job. It's not the job, as Mr. Larry said, of this person to get them there. I think we need to come up with a way to get the children into the detention after school. And then if they don't go, there has to be some consequences. You know, life is, is not easy, and I think these children need to learn that. And that's where I think we need to go, and that's more of a discussion for the regular school committee than this. And so, I'm, again, I won't support cutting it in half, just because the freshman academy is doing a great job. I think we need to have the funding in place for every, all the, for the regular high school as well, and have that staffed. And I think we need to get after the administration to do their job, to make sure the children are getting there. So, I think we need to understand the concept here. And with that, I'll support the full, if it does, if it is the wish of the body, to support the entire amount of $12,960.
Okay, Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just through you to the Superintendent, one quick question. If we don't fund this $12,000, what will we then hold over kids' heads as a consequence? Will we have any kind of detention? What would we have to offer?
I don't know. I'd have to, I'll have to have a conversation with the headmaster about what the options would be.
Roll call.
Cut it in half.
And this is to split it in half, okay.
Mr. Leahy?
Uh, no.
Mr. Larry?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
No.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Three aces, four nays, defeated.
Okay, Ms., all right, so Ms. Doherty moves to add a line item, $12,960, seconded by Mr. McHugh. Roll call.
No.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
No.
Four aces, three nays, passes.
Okay. Any further suggestions for additions or deletions on page 19?
Right.
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, the Saturday tutoring program at the high school has been formerly grant-funded. This is, this is part of the, the Saturday morning and after-school tutoring program, of which there used to be many, many funds through MCAS remediation and so on, that have been significantly reduced. This enables us to maintain a small Saturday morning program. I think Assistant Superintendent Franco was at the high school a week ago Saturday, not the Memorial Day weekend Saturday, but the Saturday before that, and was very pleased to see nearly 60 youngsters at the, at the program in the morning, through a combination of the, of the, the buyback program and tutoring. So, I think this is, this is a very modest expenditure that's well utilized at the high school.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm going to vote for this. I think it's essential that we provide whatever remedial services we can, especially since the state cut MCAS remedial funding down quite a bit. I think from 50 million statewide to 10 million. We're looking at a small amount, $23,000. It's similar to what we voted for the music programs and for the assistant coaches in athletics. I mean, clearly, this is academic support that our students need. So, I think it's very important, and it's a critical need. And I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to add $23,960 line item for Saturday morning tutoring by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leahy. Any further comment? Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
No.
Four aces, two nays, one absent. It's passes.
Approved. Okay. Any further additions on this page? Madam Superintendent, do you have a...
That's it for 19A.
Okay. All right, so, bottom line figure now for page 19A, Mr. Lang, do you have that number?
I do. With the, with all those changes, the new bottom line is $1,322,392. One, three twenty-two, three ninety-two.
Okay. Motion to approve that figure by Ms. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Six aces, one nay, approved.
Okay. Page 19B?
The, the first item on the critical needs list is the, is a very modest $1,000, used to be provided by a grant to enable our students to participate in the student leadership program through Project Alliance.
Okay. Motion to add that number?
Which, which one is it?
Through, Your Honor, to the superintendent, what exactly is Project Alliance?
Project Alliance is, is a, an organization created by the, by the district attorney, Middlesex County District Attorney, back 15 years ago. And it involves many of the school districts in Middlesex County. Most, most are members. And they run a variety of staff training around issues such as how to report suspected abuse, as well as school safety kinds of issues. So, there's a whole staff professional development component. But this is about student leadership. They run a conference to build student leadership skills among high, high school students. And so, that is an opportunity for Lowell High School students to participate in that countywide effort. So, they learn something about leadership skills and are urged to, I believe it is, participate in community service projects back in their school.
What's the wish of the committee here?
It's $1,000. I think it would be a shame if all these other school districts could participate in this Middlesex District Attorney Program, but our students couldn't for $1,000. I would support it.
All right. Motion to add this item, increase this, it's a new line item, I believe, or is it existing? It's, it's new because it was previously grant-funded, so...
Correct.
Motion to approve this addition by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leahy. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Seven aces, approved.
Okay, which, I think, the only items remaining on the critical needs are summer school.
That's right.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes, Your Honor, I was prepared to fight long and hard about the need for, especially elementary summer school. Another way that we catch our students early on who have remedial needs. I think we pay for it now, or we pay more later. But I found out at the subcommittee meeting Thursday night, that even if we were to fund this, which it's a, it's a hefty price tag, $300,000 for elementary summer school, and I believe it's $200,000 for middle school, there isn't enough time to put a quality summer school program in place that, because the district has relied on grant funding for, at least as far as I know, the last five years, if not more than that, we really didn't, the committee was not made aware of this critical issue in enough time to really look at. I mean, we look at the factors of funding, but then we have personnel issues, getting teachers in place, identifying students, notifying parents. So, I will not be recommending this budget increase at this time. But I would just like to make it known publicly, I, I think it's a severe loss for our district, and that next year, we need to do this planning early on. I, I can assume we're not going to get this grant money back for next budget either. But I, I think it's a real loss for our students, and in the long run, for the district. Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
No, I, I agree with Committeewoman Doherty. Essentially, because we're not afforded to do it this year, it's, it could cost us more money, you know, five, 10 years down the road. So, I guess, Mayor, through you to the superintendent, for planning for next year, when do we start to post for positions for teachers to teach summer school, in order to be prepared for next year?
We typically do that in February and March.
Okay, so it's really, you got to do this at the beginning of the year, almost?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Can I just clarify? For this current, for the summer that's just ahead of us, we're going to be looking at a specific middle school program that's in place. Is that correct? So, this is the middle school program that we've been talking about for quite a while. And I, I just want to be clear that this isn't a surprise. We've been discussing that we didn't have funding for elementary summer school for, for many months now. And I, I mean, as we've gone through this process, we've known that we are only going to be able to have the funding for middle schools, and that, that was the, I mean, I, I guess I just wanted to be clear that this isn't a, this isn't something that was snuck in on this committee. We were well aware of this situation, that grant funding was not going to be available for elementary summer school for many months now. Because I know that we've been discussing very clearly that middle school was the only option we had, and that it was limited. So, just in terms of, you know, as we discussed this for next year, I think that's great. I think the committee can make a determination if that's where we want to spend our money next, next year. I wouldn't presume to anticipate what our decision will be at that time, but that these are conversations that have happened, that we were certainly informed of the lack of grant funding, and that, you know, that we weren't going to be able to, to maintain those, those programs. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes, if I could just clarify my position on that. I was aware of this a couple of months ago during our subcommittee meeting on the extended day program, that the elementary school funding was going to be in the lower tier of the budget. At that time, I expressed my concern that it was a priority for me personally, that there be funding for elementary school, summer school. And if you notice the language in the, in the, that as it's listed in the budget right now, it says, elementary schools restore and expand the summer school program, for elementary summer school. So, when I first saw this budget on May 17th, I thought that, based on my expression of concern, both to the superintendent and during the subcommittee on extended day, that we needed something in there for elementary school, that I presumed that there was some in there, that we were looking to restore, expand it in this lower tier of our budget. The fact that it's in here also led me to believe that it was simply a matter of the will of the committee saying, yes, we do have, we're going to allocate the funds in order to have it. It wasn't until the meeting Thursday night that I personally became aware that even with the funding, it was too late to do it. I mean, it, it makes sense when you think about it. We've got three weeks left of school. But as someone who had never been in this position, you know, this is my third budget term on the school committee, and we had always had the summer schools grant funded. It didn't occur to me that there would need to be this lead time. So, I, I can't speak for the rest of the committee, but from my perspective, I was not fully aware of this until last Thursday night. And I did hear the conversations that there was no grant money for summer school. But my understanding was that there was still the possibility of making elementary summer school happen. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment also. I would just like to let folks at home know that we are addressing this pro, this problem by relooking at, especially in elementary schools, our reading programs, right? So, I'd be right to say that, I'd be correct to say that, you know, we're not just sitting back saying, oh, well, we don't have summer school. But we're taking a proactive stance, and we're trying to re, well, we're just making our reading programs stronger and better in the upcoming years for the elementary, which should hopefully alleviate a lot of these problems. So, we're also working on that. So, we understand that the funding for summer school, you know, that it's not there anymore, and we all feel how important it is. We know how important it is. But we are taking a proactive stance on, on the problem. So, thank you.
Okay, so I think the only additional item then on page 19B is to increase by $1,000. So, the bottom line figure on 19B is $2,087,972. Is that correct, Mr. Lang?
Well, no, the new non-personnel line item would go to 8165. The new total bottom line for A and B would move to $2,138,892.
Okay, because that is the changes from...
From the top, out of the budget, right.
Eight, eight.
Okay. Motion to approve this section by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leahy. The bot, which increases page 19B, non-personnel, by 1,000 to 816,500, and the bottom line figure, $2,0138,892. Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Six aces, one nay, approved.
Okay. I think this brings us to page 20, which I don't think is a substantive change. It's a technical change, the flip side of the change made on page 13. So, this would be adding one library media specialist, or one half, I guess, of a library media specialist, which was a trade-off from page 13. It was reduced there by $28,260. So, this item would increase by $28,260. Mr. Lang, do you have the final number there?
Yes, the two changes on this page are the 14.5 FTEs will go to 15, and the new dollar amount will be 983,638 for the library media specialist line, giving us a new bottom line for this page of $1,522,0067. One, five, two, two, zero, six, seven.
Okay. Motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Right, 1,005,22067?
Right. One million, five, two, two, zero, six, seven.
Yeah. Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Seven aces, approved.
Okay, so that, I think, brings us to page 29. All the intervening pages were approved at the last hearing. There is a proposal to decrease the amount for health insurance. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, if I could ask Assistant Superintendent Lang to comment. You've received some information in a packet from him about the city, the city's decision about how to budget for health insurance.
Thank you. I did prepare a, a quick memo and just a copy of a document I received earlier today from the city's human relations office. They had been working with Cook &amp; Company, which is the city's consultant around health insurance, budgeting costs for next year. And originally, we had been advised to include a 5% increase over our actuals for this year for health insurance. But what they're advising us, or instructing us to do at this point, as far as the city side is concerned, they're actually going to set the working rates for next year just 2.5% over the 5% increase from this year. So, that, they're actually advising us on a, on a bottom line to budget for school department personnel as far as the headcount goes in current policies of $13,22782, as opposed to, with my 5% increase, it was $13,378,779. So, the net change is actually a reduction of $355,997 from what you see before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Leary?
Just quickly, Mayor, through you to Assistant Superintendent Jay Lang, how much money are we paying this year's, this year's budget for this year's expenses for medical?
For the current year, OSEC's January 30th, we had budgeted $10,898,485 in local funds. Our actuals for the year came in at $11,191, excuse me, $694 is what has been projected. So, more than a 2.5% increase, which we budgeted last year for this year. The new number that they're working off is just, again, 2.5% as opposed to 5 for next year.
Okay, I'm, and I appreciate that. I'm, I'm going to, it's, one more question. It's safe to say, then we should anticipate additional cost on top of the 2.5% that we're going to budget here tonight. Good?
Yeah, I would, I would think that our, our project, our actuals for next year are going to come out higher. My personal feeling is over this amount.
Just really, I'm going to support it, obviously, because we have a lean budget. We got to find creative ways of managing our health costs. But just everybody be cognizant of the fact that next year, we may have to pay additional again.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve, Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to, through you to Assistant Superintendent, I'd just like to follow up on Mr. Leary's comments. When there is a, when we, do you know what the difference was about approximately from last year, the 10, 898, and the 11?
Close to $300,000.
Oh, all right. All right, and that we just took from our savings?
No, we actually... No, we actually only expand what we budget when it comes to health insurance. So next year, the most we'd be, actually spending would be your budgeted amount, the 11,820, I'm sorry, the new amount if we acted on that. If our actual claims go over what we've budgeted, the city takes that, it's kind of a shortfall, takes the shortfall out of the health insurance. This is a reserve fund that they carry. There's a requirement that they keep a fund with a certain balance in it. It's a reserve fund for health insurance claims. So they would tap into that fund to offset any additional increases over what we actually budget. They would do that for the school department as well as the city. In the long run, you've eventually got to make up what you take out of that, that health insurance fund. So at some point, you know, that number will increase. But for next year, if the city actually sets the rates for the, all their policies and all the different groups at 2.5% above current year figures, the school department also has to set their rates 2.5% above, because we all pay the same premiums for the same plans.
Okay, so what you're saying is if it goes up 3%, we're covered through that fund?
We're only going to, yeah, we're covered as far as, we're only going to pay the actual amount that we budget. Any extra would come out of the reserve. We're going to have to make up for that the next year, because our budgeted, what we're going to have to budget for '08 is going to be that much, it's going to be based on next year's actuals plus a percentage increase. So there's always a catch-up, it's just kind of like a year delay.
Okay, so do we budget a little bit more, or we go with the recommendation from the city?
I would recommend going with the recommendation from the city. I don't see it being an advantage to the school department to contribute more to the insurance than the city would be.
Okay.
I would follow their lead in this particular area. But no, as Committee members said.
And then in the end, we just all work it out together.
Yeah, any shortfall would come out of the trust fund, and then in the next year, your claims would be, or your rates would be set that much higher.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that, I guess. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? So the, that would adjust the school department health and dental insurance premium number to 13,022,782. Mr. Lang?
Yes, on that page, there's a chart after the personnel section that actually has the amount that we'll insert. It currently says $13,378,779. We'll recommend putting in the substitute amount of $13,022,782. We then will contribute next year a million dollars from our grant programs, $550,000 from our food service program, and actually need to then, on the top of the page under personnel, for health insurance premiums, budget locally $11,472,782. So that will change the new bottom line for this page for total insurance programs to equal $11,480,000, $480,282. So the bottom line is $11,480,282.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt that figure by Ms. Delahie, seconded by Ms. Martin? Roll call, please.
Ms. Delahie.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, so I think the only other, well, the suspense account we have to address, right? Because of the adjustments made on page two, I think that results in a recommended, that was voted as $5,000 at the last budget hearing, the suspense account, by virtue of the action taken on page two, an additional $15,0063 would be added to that number.
Correct.
So motion to approve that new figure by Ms. Martin, seconded by?
Is that the final 15, I was at 20?
The final number would be?
20?
20,000,063. Right, motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call.
Ms. Delahie.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, and I believe there was one further item addressed in the covering memo dated today from Mr. Lang, which I think impacts page five. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, you have information in a memo from the Assistant Superintendent, having to do with rollover funds and unemployment compensation surplus, and a recommendation. I'd ask Mr. Lang to explain it.
Thank you. We had at the May 8th meeting of the Finance Subcommittee, after our third quarter preview for the year, identified at that point some potential surplus funds for the remainder of the school year. And based on my latest projections through last week, it still appears that we're on target to have about a $200,000 surplus in our various salary accounts at the end of the year, and that's due largely to vacancies that develop over the course of the year. There's a lag time before, between when you hire a new employee and they come on board. And throughout the district, I anticipate about a $200,000 surplus will remain there at the end of the year. Additionally, between FY '05 and FY '06, our special let out of district tuition account and circuit breaker reimbursement has been higher than we actually anticipated it would be. So an additional surplus at the end of this year, a one-time surplus, I have to stress, because we're now catching up from '05 to '06, this isn't going to appear every year. About $600,000 will remain in the special let out of district tuition account at the end of this year. So in total, I'm estimating that we'll have about $800,000 at the end of the year that we could potentially roll into FY '07 to assist with the budget. Additional part of that on the bottom part of the paragraph is for the, this, every year, the school department communicates to the city a requested amount that they carry, because they pay our unemployment compensation costs for us on the city side of the budget. It's actually included in their section. This past year, we had included $600,000 to be expended for school department unemployment compensation charges, and our actuals are going to come in, about half of that, about $300,000. So I've communicated to them next year that I feel comfortable with about a $300,000 line item being carried for all of our unemployment on the school side, which would result in a $300,000 savings on the city, in the city side of the budget, which we would obviously like reflected back to the school department. So in total, at this particular point in time, what I had done on the, when I gave you the preview, where we stood after the last budget session, I had identified what the actual numbers on the Chapter 70 increase from the Senate were. Just one second. In 2006, our Chapter 78 was 108,399,118. Based on the Senate number, which we obviously hope will come through for us, that number had came through at 111,755,687. So it was about a $3.3 million increase in Chapter 70 funds. In addition to that, I identified approximately $800,000 rollover to go into '07, as well as $300,000 in that unemployment compensation funds. So I did just lay that out on the front page of the budget, and that showed where we stood at the end of the last budget session. But I would be comfortable to get back to the original memo of actually rolling over from our particular budget, $800,000 at the end of '06 into '07. And I did state in the last paragraph that whatever amount we do decide to carry over should actually be deducted from our school department budget appropriation request from the city council, so that we're actually requesting a dollar amount less, less that rollover amount.
Okay, any questions on that? So how does that, Ms. Delahie, that's going to impact on page five, I believe, if that's acceptable? I guess you have a recommendation on?
So if the committee wishes, those, that amount of $1,71,447 could be added in a line called FY 2007 salary increases, which would represent 1% of payroll, and could therefore be used to establish a line to fund salary increases for 2007 that may be negotiated, if that's the committee's pleasure.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes, I would support that recommendation. I'd like to be upfront about how we're going to fund any salary adjustments and what our limitations are. I mean, we've got a very lean budget. We've tried to stay focused on student learning and programs that we need to put in place to keep student learning moving forward. That being said, I think that we do have to look realistically at salary adjustments for next year, and I would, I would support a line item on the budget that would equal our rollover money, would be what we would have available for salary adjustments.
Okay, so motion to add a line item on page five in the amount of $1,71,447 to fund salary increases that may be negotiated by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Questions? Ms. Larry.
Quick question to the mayor, through you to Assistant Superintendent Jay Lang. The $800,000 circuit breaker, is this something we can anticipate occurring again next year and in future years?
No, the circuit breaker was actually about $600,000. It was $200,000 from our salary lines and $600,000 from circuit breaker. It happened by and large in '05. This is only the second or third year that the circuit breaker funding has come along. And the Department of Education revenue and the whole way the formula works has changed and been evolving over the last couple of years. So we're much more certain now when we do budget projections, based on what our circuit breaker reimbursement is going to be going into next year as we were in '05, because they actually adjusted the reimbursement ongoing with the students over the course of the school year that were in placements. Now, the way the Department of Education is actually working it is you're getting your circuit breaker reimbursement based on your previous year placements. So all of the students who have been placed from last July 1st to this June 30th, which is a known entity, we know where they are, we know what dollars we've actually expended on their behalf. There's a formula that derives what your reimbursement for those students is going to be, and we then get that for the next school, the next school year, the next fiscal year. In '05, again, it was kind of based on rolling numbers every quarter, you would get a payment, and we actually just understated what the amount in reimbursement was going to be. So that savings developed in '05. It was used in this current year, but then what that did is free up money in our out-of-district tuition account. So this is, this is one time. This won't be something you can count on every year.
So based on the information you have right now, you won't see half a million dollars or more from the circuit breaker?
No.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. Really, just in terms of a request, and I know it's a, really, an issue of semantics, but as we look at this, I would like to make the request that we have this, this line item defined as salary adjustments as opposed to salary increases. Again, it's one of those things, if I didn't say it now, it'll drive me nuts all year as we look at this budget line item. But I just think it's more accurate, you know, COLAs, you know, cost of living adjustments are named that for a reason. So if we could just, I would appreciate it, I know you did, and I appreciate that. Ms. Dougherty did indeed use that terminology, which I appreciate. But it's just, you know, if we, I don't know if we need to make that in the form of a motion, or if it's just a language issue we can change.
I think that's the motion she made, actually, so I don't think it needs to be changed.
So if we could just make the budget reflect the language that's been?
Right. Okay, roll call.
Ms. Delahie.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, so that, I think, brings us to the bottom line, right?
Yes, that would bring us to a new bottom line for this page of $7 million.
Page five.
Page five. 7053,947.
Okay, motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Roll call.
Ms. Delahie.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, and I think that brings us to a bottom line for the full budget.
It does. The, with all adjustments made over the last two budget sessions, the recommended budget at this point would stand at a dollar amount, $133,813,136.
Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
By Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Any questions or comments? I do have a brief comment, if there's no objection from here. I know this, I'm going to support this recommended amount, but I wanted to be clear that this is based on an increase in Chapter 78, you know, of over $3 million from the Senate. If we end up with something significantly less than that, that may change my position on the budget that I would vote on at the city council. I just want to be upfront about that. Any further comments? Roll call on the final amount.
Ms. Delahie.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, Madam Superintendent?
One last item. If I could ask Mr. Lang to explain one other vote that the committee may need to take on the basis of what you've just done.
Thank you. The, that would be the bottom line of the school department budget for the next year. However, if we do carry that $800,000 of our own money over from '06 to '07, our actual request to the city council, their appropriation would be $800,000 less than that amount. So I think it would be appropriate, if the committee feels so, to vote to actually have the city council appropriation requests equal that sum, which is $132,208,136.
Move approval.
Motion to approve the request to the city council by Ms. Fattacante, $132,208,136, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call, please.
Ms. Delahie.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Ms. Dougherty.
Your honor, yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules in order to request committee approval for a student trip, a last-minute student trip.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve a student trip by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Do you have a?
Yes.
Why don't you go ahead and read it?
Okay, this is a request for Lowell High School senior Amber Zapata, who is a member of the Lowell High School crew team, along with Coach Jen Campbell, to participate in the national championships in Cincinnati, Ohio. I'd request the committee vote this evening to authorize this trip, which occurs before our next regular school committee meeting, which is scheduled for June 14th.
Move approval, your honor.
Motion approved by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call.
Ms. Delahie.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.